Good evening. Welcome to this regular scheduled business meeting of the Somersville City Council on this 26th day of September 2022. First of all, I'd like to welcome all of our guests this evening and move right into tonight's agenda. First item being consideration of the council minutes of the meeting we held on September 12th of 2022.
Wait for it. Second.
Okay, we've got a first and a second council. The minutes were presented in your package. Are there any changes or amendments to those minutes as they were presented? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Public comment. Anybody sign up for public comment other than...
No.
Nope, good deal. Okay, tonight is a great night for the city of Somersville because we take time out of our busy schedule to honor somebody as the guest of honor tonight that certainly deserves to be honored. So Rodney, if you and your lovely wife Becky would please come to the podium. And are you okay to stand? Is that...
All fine, thought one of these guys would catch me.
Guys, don't let him go down.
We'll catch him on that one.
Chief, welcome to city council chambers tonight. And I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Rodney Snodgrass began his fire service career on October 19th of 1984 with the city of Somersville's fire department, moving through the ranks until he's being elected as fire chief in September of 2008. Whereas Fire Chief Rodney Snodgrass officially retired July 15th of 2022. Whereas under his leadership, the city fire department has grown to meet the emergency response needs of the community it serves. Whereas Chief Snodgrass has been an integral member of the broader county fire community by contributing his time and expertise to the many projects, committees, and official boards to promote safe, efficient methods utilizing available resources to enhance fire service and citizen protection in our county. Whereas on behalf of the entire city council, we wish to express our sincere appreciation to Chief Snodgrass for his countless hours of service to our city and its citizens and furthermore wish him much happiness as he begins a new chapter in his life. Now therefore, I Robert L. Schaefer, Mayor of the city of Somersville, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 26th, 2022, as Fire Chief Rodney Snodgrass Day. Today is your day Rodney. Not many people get a city day in that. Today is your day. In the city of Somersville, and I urge all citizens and employees to join me and the city council in appreciating his many years of dedication and congratulating Chief Snodgrass on an outstanding career and job well done. In witness whereof, I here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Somersville to be affixed this 26th day of September 2022. Thank you. I'm not ready for your speech yet. We have a couple more presentations. Here's your proclamation.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief. Now we get to hear from newly elected Chief Evan Aldrich.
Four weeks ago. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to start by thanking the mayor and the city council for abiding this year this evening to celebrate Chief Snodgrass's career. Chief Snodgrass served our community for over 37 years. He joined the Somersville Fire Department in October of 1984. He served many roles in our department over those 37 years, but most notably as our chief for the last 14. He took pride in everything he did for our community and our department. He was and still is proud of this department and the reputation that it has built. He helped build that reputation. Every organization can look back through its history and point out men or women who have helped shape and build it into what it is today. Chief Snodgrass is one of those people for us. He was always there for his people when they had a bad call or willing to talk or bring someone in to talk to us. He always backed us up even if it meant dragging the hose which we all know he shouldn't have been doing. He has led our department through the great times and dark times. He has led us through numerous disasters, some of those to mention the deratio and the super storm Sandy of 2012, the floods of 2016, and most recently the tire fire on Christmas Day 2021. On that day, he made sure all of his people got to spend Christmas with their families by rotating crews. He never left. He was with his firefighters when they got injured and always made sure that they were taken care of. Chief Snodgrass did it all in his career. He rolled around in the snow with a state trooper on Cut Hill one night to help apprehend it. Man that the trooper was trying to arrest, he calmly and professionally handled a mayday call where one of his own was injured after falling through a floor into a basement. His calmness under stress, that is what always gave us the confidence to handle bad situations. It did not matter how bad the call, he was always calm and direct with how he wanted us to do things. He gets more excited if we don't wash the truck than he did if we were out on a bad call.
True.
He takes pride in his fire trucks though. I promise you right now, you can go to our station and not find a speck of mud or dirt on a Somersville fire truck. He firmly believes if you don't take pride in your station and your equipment, how can you take pride in what you do? I can remember him saying at 3:00 a.m., "You build confidence in the person you're trying to help if you show up in a clean truck." When I was young, I never understood that, but now I do. Taking the time to clean those trucks and make sure everything is in order shows you care of what you're doing and take pride in it. Hundreds if not thousands of firefighters have benefited from Rodney and his dedication to the fire service over the years in this state and the education that he brought them as an instructor. I can personally credit Rodney with the knowledge and skills that I have today. In the last 13 years I have been with this department, he has evolved me into not only the firefighter I am today, but the man and the leader of our department that I am now. Thank you Rodney for the many years of sleepless nights, the thousands of calls, the leadership, but most importantly, your friendship. And with that, we've got something that we'd like to give you, Chief. With all your dedication and everything, we wanted to present you with your retirement. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, Becky, can you come up here with Rodney? So as we know that the men and women that actually serve as firefighters make many, many sacrifices, so do their spouses. And Becky, this is a little token of our appreciation for everything you've done to support Rodney and also help with the Somersville Fire Department. We appreciate you and recognize you. Well, yeah, we appreciate you. As I said, we didn't get you a fire hose or a jacket or a helmet that you could play with at home. We thought we would get you something that you might enjoy for retirement.
Charlie, just got plenty.
So you can take this down here chair and maybe enjoy retirement.
More about her thing.
Hey, what I'd like to do if we could real quick is have you and Becky stand up here with this council if you get real quick for a picture.
Where you want.
We'll stand right down here. Chief, I'd love to get all... Should we try to get them all in here? I think we can. All in uniform, get in here. Yeah, we want a picture of all of them.
Even Bronn?
Yeah, we can crowd, we can crowd. Even Bronn. He's being quiet today.
Now he's all ass. Oh, do you know how to pick you up?
Can you see everybody?
Big smiles, one, two, three. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Do you have a speech?
Oh, but I'll...
Thank you all.
You can read mine again.
Thanks.
You lied and had to... Set him up. I want to thank everyone for this. Billy Beckton very coughed me this morning. Everyone may have all been here. I want to thank these guys right here and these ladies. They make that fire work on what it is. And I'm picking up on the desk to know that he's going to keep those trucks clean. This council, I appreciate everything you all do for the fire department. Mayor, I've had some ups and downs with other mayors, bagwits, and I've had a few little disagreements with this one. We have managed to work it all out and you all take a very good care of this fire department. You've got one of the best equipped fire departments in the state of West Virginia. Pay more volunteer. And that comes down to you guys too about taking care of the equipment things that we need your job. So I just want to thank you all for that too. Thank you.
Now you're all welcome to go if you want. Okay. If you would do Rodney a favor and pick that chair up and help him get it to his vehicle, that would be great.
I like that, Bronn's going.
Thank you Rodney, Becky, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it. Okay, moving right along, the next item on the agenda is approval of the West, approval of West Virginia Region for PDC 2022 Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution. And we're glad to have with us... That's a lot to say, Betsy.
I couldn't make it any longer.
We're glad to have with us Front Region Board Betsy Morris. Betsy, welcome.
Okay. Good evening, council members. So in your package, you should have a resolution for the adoption of the 2022 Region for Hazard Mitigation Plan update. This is a plan that they update every five years and address all natural disasters and it gives us just an outline of how we should react if there is such a disaster. It could be a windstorm, a hailstorm, God forbid another flood like in 2016. Anytime there is a federally declared disaster, we can go back to that plan and make an update. But every five years, we have to redo the whole plan. And that's a big process. Part of your OES department from Nicholas County participates in that plan as well as we open up a survey to people to see how we're doing, what they think is the most important disasters that we need to be prepared for. And the plan outlines what our response will be as far as grant writers. Could be stormwater, could be something else that we need to do, could be snags in a river, could be different things that we would need to address within that plan. It would be exhaustive if we tried to address every single thing, hailstorm, flood, that would break, but it's everything, tornadoes, hailstorms. I don't think we're going to see those things, but heaven forbid that we do. We hope we don't have to use the plan, but we have to have it on file with the state of West Virginia and with FEMA. And if the community would decide not to participate in the plan now, you would run the risk of not being covered by FEMA if you would decide not to adopt this plan. With that being said...
Thank you. Council, I would move to approve the resolution.
Seven, second.
So first and a second, any questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Thank you, Betsy. Job well done. Okay, the next item on the agenda is amendment to discussion. And with us tonight, we have County Commissioner Garrett Cole and our county assessor Ernie Dennison. Gentlemen, the podium is yours.
Good evening, council. First, if the assessor Dennison would, if he just ran through kind of the numbers we're looking at with the county, then I can kind of explain where we're at on the commission side.
Good evening, gentlemen. As you have heard or may have been aware of, the amendments will be on the ballot this fall. They are amendments, the amendment that in question that we're going to discuss is amendment two. Amendment two pertains to the legislature wanting to do away with business inventory, machinery and equipment, and possibly automobile tax on personal property. This amendment though will not eliminate that. What it actually states is that it will be taken from the West Virginia Constitution and be given the authority to the legislature to do as they wish. So with that being said, whatever they would decide or decide what would be eliminated, what would be kept, or whatever they would want to do with the personal property on a broad scale and the taxes that it generates from that, which they would like to eliminate on this amendment, that once that happens and they can decide what they want, they may pull inventory, machinery, equipment on business, and not the automobile. We do not know. They say they're going to do that, but as you all are very well aware of, that in that case, unless you have been writing beforehand, you do not know. Now what effect this will have on our county, is what I'm going to give to you. And then Commissioner Cole will explain where the senate members stand from his perspective and what I've heard and what he's heard. And so the first thing though, if this amendment passes, if amendment two passes, the county will lose from just those three items that I've said roughly about 4.5 million. The number exactly is 4,493,820 dollars. That's the projected estimate, okay? Of that, the county government would lose approximately 1.4 million dollars. Then it would go on down to what you would lose. And that estimate, I can't get a real good number on it, but you're going to lose probably because you have most inventory, you have business equipment, but you do not have mining equipment. Roughly the number I come up is 22,300,000 dollars up the top. And I would, that can be a lot, just for you, the city of Somersville. Now what I worry about also is the fact that it's going to have on Pilt agreements, probably you know what I'm talking about, similar contract you have with Hydro Plant. Counties looking at some other things. Then we've got to get into the access levies to see. And we have not been given a clear answer on how this money is going to be made up. And that's what Garrett will get into with the discussion. So, and it is recently, there's been more and more people who have actually come out and stated that they are not favorable of this, and not because it's not a good idea. It's where is the money going to be made up? That's the problem. You know, yes, who doesn't want to pay taxes on their car? Who doesn't if they have a business want to pay on inventory and machinery and equipment? If it would help generate more business for our businesses or relieve taxation from the local citizens? The problem is, you take it away, you still need it, as you all are aware of, as running with city budgets, where are you going to get it back or how are you going to get it back? So that's the big question. And if anyone has anything on this amendment that they would like to discuss with me or maybe get more detail or more in depth, I'm not going to take up all your time, but you can contact me and I will try to find out to you or whatever, give you some direction or advice or whatever may help you as a council. And I'm not going to take up all your time.
Hey, Ernie, a question real quick.
Go ahead.
You said the total loss of all those, if they would all pass after the amendment passed, legislature went back down, is 4.5 million. The loss of the counties 1.4. Would it be correct to say that the 3.1 is the Board of Education?
Yes.
Yeah. So, you know, so that's, that's, that's a hit too on the school system.
Oh, definitely.
You know, it's, it's, you know, total 4.5 to the, to the county, but the, the school system would be 3.1 million.
And your number is...
Yeah.
I'll tell you that right off. That was just a number that I pulled from automobiles and some class four, because you are a class four, and a percent. It's you look at the numbers and it could possibly be more with different things that you... And if they take, gentlemen, if they take money from this and they're offering grants or whatever else, if they don't have that money to offer those grants, state grants, like economic development or whatever to make up to pay supposedly pay back this or cover this, because I'll let Commissioner Cole talk about it, but the numbers that I heard that we go, we lose 600 and some million just off machinery, inventory statewide, not counting automobiles, which puts it up to about a billion. And they're going to make that up without doing anything, without increasing real estate taxes, without sales tax, without, you know, there's some way that's going to be made up. The rainy day fund will cover the first year, but then they said an overflow of 146 million a year, that'll cover 600 million, you know? And I just know the numbers and I've seen it, I've seen this county, which didn't affect you all because it was mining equipment 2014. This county went broke. I've been there, I've seen it. I've seen the people laid off, I've seen what effect it has on it because there was no place to get money. The county, yes, had a rainy day fund, it dried up the next year to cover the cost. And then everything started happening, the layoffs, the cutbacks, you know? No more money to anyone in the county for anything. The commission couldn't help provide any assistance to the other, you know, organizations in the county. So something to take serious, something to be aware of, something really to look at because you as members of the council will probably be questionable also. Okay, I'll talk to them.
Senator Tarr is one of the senators headlining this amendment. Follow up, if you will, as Assessor Dennison said, the amendment's just allowing the legislature to have the authority over these situations, not an actual action being taken. But in our commission association conferences and so forth, they did provide us with the way they want to break down the changes to this. What it would be is that they would establish a fund where they would place 100 million dollars. That 100 million dollars would be fed into year after year and the counties would draw off of it. Nicholas County was not set because we've been a flat county over the last, it looks like it would be five years. They set a minimum of a million dollars. And so we're a million dollar plus county. Now that's still divided at the Board of Education, 250 to the, roughly 250 to the county commission, 750 to the Board of Education. However, we've been in, I've personally been in five different meetings with Senator Tarr personally, and there is still no guarantee of where the funding is going to be in 10 years, in 15 years, in 20 years. As you all know, as council members, we know as commissioners, and Mr. Dennison knows and as assessor, you have to set your governments up for not the end of your term, but for years to come. One issue, and full clarity at the beginning of all this, I will say the Nicholas County Commission is not taking an action on this, quite frankly, because we keep going back and forth. I've spoken with Commissioner Chapman, Commissioner Atkins, and soon to be Commissioner Roberts, and about every two weeks, we get a new piece of information that we want to lean one way, we want to lean the other. At this time, I'm leaning against it. I'm not against it just yet, but I'm pretty close because as Assessor Dennison did say, we have no guarantee of the funding going forward. As we all know, you know, the county bankrupt roughly seven years ago because of the liability of the coal industry. You know, China buys coal, Russia buys coal, legislatures come and go. China needs coal for generations to come, legislature flips with one person, we get a new majority, we get a new speaker, we get a new this. All of a sudden, I don't think the counties need that money. I don't think the Board of Education's need that money. They have full right to just say, you're not getting anything. That total 4 million dollars could very well potentially be cut of Nicholas County, 20 to 30 million dollars to Canal County, Mon County, counties like that. An issue to consider too is this is not a reset, this is not an inflation proof plan. This plan is at a set rate of what would be 5.4 million, roughly 5.5 million, sorry. However, that's set for the next 100 years. As we've seen in the last five years, inflation is more volatile than we would prefer it to be. And in 10 years, will that extra 250,000 dollars from the county even be cents on the dollar in 10 years, 15 years, 20 years? Governor Justice has come out against amendment two. In fact, as Mayor Schaefer graciously let us know today, and I appreciate you letting us know that, Governor Justice will be in Somersville this Wednesday at 1:30 at the Somersville Pavilion, speaking about his plan on income tax versus this amendment to plan. Senator Carnes, who is one of our current sitting senators until the election, has been reaching out to myself and a couple other commissioners in the area. He has a plan that's more like a home rule version for counties that would be more inflation proof. As prices rise, so would the percentage of tax or so forth that his plan includes. And so there's so many dynamics. I can remember two to three years ago, sitting in the gallery when J.R. Pitts, a bar owner used to be our senator, and this got voted down at that time. They didn't have the backstory, they didn't have the 10-year plan, they just had the, I want to cut taxes, I want to cut taxes. And I'm very much afraid they stepped back and punted and we're still at the exact same place. We want to cut taxes, but there's no guarantee for our city, for our county, and for our Board of Education. And so it's something definitely, I'd love to see something happen in this plan, you know, we're all pro-business, we all want to see taxes cut, we all want to see all these things. However, we've got six different plans and none of them, I believe, are at 100% where they need to be. So the commission may consider an action. If I was to put on the agenda for, in two weeks, I'd be putting against it. However, we're still waiting on answers from Senator Tarr and others to try and see where this is going to end up.
Garrett, you said that Senator Tarr's plan would backfill you a million dollars?
Yes.
Okay, so you're losing...
What they did is they took an average of the last five years of machinery and equipment, furnitures and fixtures, leasehold investments, computer and equipment, inventory and vehicles, and took the best year of the five and averaged it out, and it didn't equal a million, so they just took it up to a million.
Okay.
Yes.
So the way I understand it, Senator Tarr is one of the big advocates behind this. As a matter of fact, he's an author of this, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'd like to understand where you're going to lose 4.5, he's only going to backfill you with a million. Of course, that's all I'm...
That's a million, that, so I didn't explain it to everyone, I apologize for that. Instead of the 4.5 million that we currently perceive, he's saying that we would perceive 5.5, an additional million dollars.
Okay, on top of the 4.5.
Right, right, right. Because the argument there is a majority of counties are regressive counties. I think it's over 27 counties are actually shrinking in their budgets. So he said a million dollar minimum, saying, hey, here's you, at least a guaranteed standard. But when you're taking away a large portion of where we fluctuate, where we try to fluctuate and bringing up the red, again, it's stagnant and it's not inflation proof.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, Garrett did correctly state, they're going to have, or we're having at the city pavilion on Wednesday, what's going to be called a community conversation with Governor Jim Justice. And that's going to be on amendment two and personal income tax. He's going to talk about both subjects. So it's Wednesday right here. So it's Wednesday right here at 1:30. We plan to have the stage set with chairs and the governor, and so everybody's invited. And of course, you know, I have heard that the governor is speaking against Amendment Two, and I don't know what the personal income tax spill is he has, but we'll look forward to hearing it.
Essentially, that's his alternative answer, and as you'll see, even Baby Dog says, say no to Amendment Two. That's what the governor's putting out now, of course. Baby Dog runs the governor's office, so here he's speaking.
I'm sure that'll help.
Amendment Two. You'd be surprised.
God help us. Actually, I did get confirmed that Baby Dog's coming to Somersville. Okay, well, anybody have any questions?
Garrett, how is the state going to replace this? What's the thinking behind that?
The answer is I'm waiting on, just to be frank with you. Because, I mean, it all sounds good until, like I said, it comes down to what's the long-term funding solution to these lost funds? Because right now, as a commissioner, we, and not to speak for us, Assessor Dennison before an assessor's office, you know, we have this guaranteed income, but whatever's in the county, good or bad, we get. I mean, I would never accuse the current legislature of this or a former legislature of this, but you could have a legislature where, well, I don't like Nicholas County, they need to take a 10% cut in the back year, they need to, we need to increase this county. There's just so much, there's no set plan on how much we truly get. This, I mean, this one proposal, this is not set in stone, this is not even voted on yet, actually, where we give an additional million dollars, let alone in 10 years when the county, the state does give it. I mean, all the counties fluctuate, you know, let's be real. I mean, West Virginia, you know, we're not as coal reliant, we're more diverse, things will turn. When it does, it's a lot easier to say, county commissioners, you figured it out, than the legislature, as a 134-person body, come together and say, we're going to figure out our own, we're going to cut our own budget. And that's my concern.
A little scary. Total, total authority.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. They have total authority.
Yeah.
Wow.
We've seen some effective things in Charleston.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay. The next item on the agenda is recommendation from the Somersville Planning and Zoning Commission to remove the moratorium on Airbnb short-term rentals. I'll entertain a motion.
Set up a motion.
Got a first and a second, now discussion. Any discussion? Gary, would you like to say anything?
Well, yeah, I guess as chair of the planning and zoning, I have a couple of members here on here, and they may want to speak up, so too, but, you know, we were back and forth on this quite heavily, and looking at regulation and what we could do to regulate things. But truly, at the end of the day, with the home rule coming into effect, I think we can all agree that that was some legislature there in Charleston, and, you know, we were just sort of struggling with it, and not a lot we could do with it. But the home rule says you will have it, and you will not regulate it. So, you know, we're sort of at that spot. And so we, as a commission, got together and recommended, wanted to recommend to the city council to remove that. So I know the mayor goes down on the 12th, and we hope to find something out early after, like maybe 13th, 14th, maybe we'll find something out, and then we can move on from there. As long as the home rule, we did not want to put the mayor in a position to go down in front of the council, in a position where he may be asked that question, you know, why do you have this moratorium out there when home rule says you're going to have it? So that was a big play, and my decision, anyway. Jim?
Yeah, this, of course, I talked a bit about this at the planning and zoning meeting, and probably said too much, but this is one of those things, I think, in government service that you see happening in Charleston at federal level, where you have an act or proposed legislation. There's, of course, one in the mill up in Washington right now, where there's some benefit, there's some benefit to it, but there's some parts that you don't like either. Which is the classic case. I mean, there's a lot of benefit for the city of Somersville in adopting home rule. However, there is a provision in there that relates to short-term rentals that I absolutely detest. I don't know of anything that I have been more aggravated over than this thing. And for those folks in Charleston to put this on cities and limit cities in this way, particularly when home rule is about giving cities more economy to go about their affairs.
Spot on.
So that is the problem. So what happened down there was just a miscarriage of good, decent, I think, legislative action. So as Gary mentioned, it's something, if we're going to have home rule, then we're going to have to buy a diet, and hope very much that something is done, and maybe there's some action that can be generated in Charleston legislatively to take another look at this thing. Because that provision needs to be struck from the legislation, from the act. So I've expressed my distaste for this thing a lot, so... But, you know, I guess it's up to us to decide what's most important to us, you know, and maybe hope and pray that, you know, the negative effects that could come from unlimited maybe freedom in this regard relating to a particular business type in our community, maybe we can hope that it doesn't happen, doesn't come to pass. There's no guarantee that it's going to be detrimental on the other side. But on the other hand, there's some cities that have really struggled with this thing, and it's kind of ruined their neighborhoods and changed the character and nature of the This free-for-all with this particular business type, so there's just some things about home rule we don't like, and that's one of them. I absolutely understand the mayor's position, and there's a lot of good in it, there's just something we don't like about it. And if we proceed with home rule, that's, we're going to have to live with it unless we can change it. So that's, and I hope that the mayors and cities will get behind an effort to change it.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, and I guess, you know, what I'd like to say, something real simple is, you know, Jim, your comments are well appreciated because you're speaking on behalf of your constituency, and that's what you're elected to do. And so this is one of those deals where we struggle because we know what home rule will bring us, but, you know, a legislator put his self-interest before, you know, the bill in itself, and one little piece in the whole bill that regulates something happens to be the short-term rentals. And quite frankly, when you dig into it, you'll find out that it's, that was in there because he, because of city zoning and stuff that was going on in his neck of the woods, you know, he had that piece put into the legislation saying that you can't regulate them, and of course, it passed that way. So what we'll do is we'll continue to work to preserve our communities, our neighborhoods, and the sanctity of where we live, and with the will, we'll find a way, and, you know, somehow, some way, we'll do everything we can to make sure that we preserve all neighborhoods, not just those protected by deeds. With that said, any other council comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion so carries. Okay, counsel, the next item on the agenda, I'm just going to give you some information. It's asking for approval, we're not there. I would like to give you some information. Immediately after the last council meeting, I had very constructive and excellent meetings to reset the table, of which we have, and the issue of you not getting the documents so you could pre-read it before today's meeting, is the terms have been worked out, just as they were prior, and let me just revisit those with you. The changes you will see in the document that's forthcoming, and the reason you don't have it is their attorney, I guess, is on vacation or out of pocket through Wednesday of this week. So that's why we don't have any document, the finish line, but the terms have been negotiated. We will, they will get the original naming rights, we previously discussed, that's the naming right to the entrance road and a ball field of their choice. And also discovered, kind of, you know, just, you know, by mistake late in the game, because of the right-of-way we're getting going in, it was accident overlooked, the billboard, the city will take possession of the billboard, and the lease has been paid through 2024, and it has the option for an extension to 2029. As we sit here today, I can't tell you officially that the billboard will create issues to our entrance, but as we buy the property, we inherit the billboards, the lease has been paid through 2024, the negotiation is, is they would keep that rent through 2024. If the option to renew, there's an option in the lease to renew to 2029, if that is executed, then all of that revenue would become the city's. Anyway, again, waiting for the official document, which is delayed because of the attorney being out of pocket, so I anticipate that we'll get that document the end of this week or the first of next week, will be shipped out to you immediately when it falls in my hands, and it'll be on the agenda for approval and passage at the next council meeting. Okay, any questions? Okay. Next is recorder's report.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, we've actually moved on from the Airbnb planning and zoning, and I too want to thank Jim and the rest of my commissioners. There was a lot of tough decisions made there and a lot of great discussion, and I thought it went real well. I'm proud of the commission, the way they handled it and the way they spoke up and addressed it. So everything was done very professionally and done well. Next on our agenda, which is in their hands, I will give you a date at our next meeting, we're doing a lot of work on that, and I've left some work with the commission to study, and hopefully they're doing their due diligence on it, but we'll be working with all-terrain vehicles in the city limits, on our city streets. So we're going from one hotspot to another, and we look forward to this discussion and looking into that. So there's a lot of good information out there on that. The state has already addressed all-terrain vehicles, so the state actually gives cities the rights to patrol that and govern that how they wish to handle it. But they do have some good guidelines out there, and some good rules that they have in place already. So we won't have to reinvent the wheel, but it does need discussed. So hopefully, we'll be able to work some things out relatively quickly. So if you have any questions or you have any comments, please give me a call, and everybody has my number, call me. I'll be glad to bring them up at our commission meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gary. Mr. Recorder. Okay, next is mayor's report, counsel, I just have a few items. First, I want everybody to know there's a meet the candidate this Thursday at the Somersville Arena and Conference Center at 6:00 PM. Certainly invite everybody to come out. I will tell you that on the local level, because of no opposition, there's not going to be a local level, this is more state-level, delegates and senators meet the candidate. Also would like to let you know that on Wednesday, October 6th, at 12 noon, Camden on Gully Clinic here downtown Somersville, they're having a ribbon cutting on the clinic for their dental clinic. So that's, and that's being hosted by the Somersville Area Chamber of Commerce. Again, that's noon this, or next Thursday, October 6th, at the Camden Clinic here downtown Somersville. Finally, counsel, I'd like to remind you all that the city employees and council flu shots are also on October 6th. All you got to do is show up here at city council chambers from 9:00 to 10:00 AM, and this is a extension of, you know, to the city employees and council and your spouses. So that's flu shots given here at city hall by the health department, 9:00 to 10:00 AM on that same day, October 6th. That concludes the mayor's report. Any council reports? Okay, again, the executive session on the agenda is not needed, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make adjourn.
Got a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you, counsel.